The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Good evening, everybody. I'm going to call the joint meeting on Wednesday, November 9th, to order at 6:45, and we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance, flag to my left.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic's political stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item number one is approval of the minutes of the regular joint meeting on October 11th, 2022. Cheryl, I'll get you the second. Any changes, amendments, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number two is the consent calendar. Does anybody have anything they wish to take off? The consent calendar goes down to M.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to pull items E and F from the consent calendar for further discussion.
Okay. Give a second, then.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Anything else? Hearing no others, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar A through D and F through M.
Move it.
Second.
Any other comments, questions, or discussion on this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Sebastian, want to make a motion on E, then? And then we'll talk about it, to approve E?
I'd like to make a motion to approve item E.
Second.
All right. And Sebastian, you pulled it off. Let us know why.
So, item E and F are the... Well, one item is the transfer within the general fund, and item F is the appropriation of the $10,000 for what is listed as funding to provide services to a consultant to revise the inland wetland maps. So that's from a letter dated October 26th. So I'm just trying to square that because for the council agenda in the consent calendar, we do have item E, which is a memo dated October 31st of this year to award the contract to update the inland wetland maps for $49,000. So I don't know if I'm kind of comparing apples to oranges.
Ray Rogazinski, Director of Public Works for the city of Bristol. It is the same item that's on the joint board and on the city council, and the difference between the dollar amount is that the city originally received appropriation... Public Works originally received their appropriation through the CIP program for... I would have to, you know, do the math, but that difference of $10,000 is the difference between our original appropriation through the CIP program, which was city cash, and now we're... For additional funds, we're doing a transfer from Public Works' operational account, and we're actually using the salary account from our environmental engineer, that's current position that's currently vacant.
Okay, so...
So the Board of Finance transfer is to create a pot of money necessary to move forward with the remapping. The difference is... Was previously funded through the CIP program.
Okay. So the consultant is that BL companies?
Correct.
That is a consultant, okay. Okay, thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments?
Through the chair, can we then combine both items? Because we only moved item E, right? So can we combine the motion now for both E and F?
I think technically I did say F through M, correct? Is that what you guys heard? So I think we approved everything but E.
Oh, okay.
And then Sebastian brought up E, and so now we'll go ahead and do that. Although they were linked, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
I think we're going to approve this one, too. We might have a problem if we approve one and not the other, but let's see what happens here. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. So the F was connected to E, Sue. I see you looking at me, so... We had already approved that. If we didn't approve this, we might have to retake...
I think Sebastian pulled E and F off. Yes, and I seconded it.
I misspoke. So for the record, then, I think we will correct then what I just said. So we had pulled E and F. I think I said just D, and then F through M. So it was technically G through M. My bad.
How about I make a motion to approve item E? No F now.
F, now.
Thank you.
Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 We're back on track. Sorry about that. All right. We will move on to item number three, which is to transfer $18,000 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfers out. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments on this? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number four, to make additional appropriation of $36,000 within the special grants and donation fund funded by the 2022 Bullard Proves Partnership Grant.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in... Any comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number five, to make transfers totaling $504,195 within the general fund as of June 30th, 2022.
And, Your Honor, this item does need to be amended. The figure should be $485,000. The controller had a change with that particular figure, so...
Yep. And what was that number again? So that when somebody reads...
$485,000.
$485,000. All right, so I need to...
I make a motion to amend the item to $485,000.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. So we're good on that one? And now we can move to six, which I assume will be the same amendment?
It will be the same amendment, but there's an additional change, and it's going to be within the capital projects school fund and $454,000 within the equipment building sinking fund. So it's $485,000 for the total appropriation and $454,000 for the equipment building sinking fund.
Great. So we can just do that straight motion, I think, right? Go ahead, Cheryl.
Move approval with the revised numbers of $485,000 and $454,000 coming out of the equipment sinking... Building sinking fund.
Great. Second for Marie. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number seven, to make transfers totaling $9,403 from the general fund contingency account for year-end transfers as of June 30th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments, questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number eight, to make an additional appropriation totaling $4,747,605 within the general fund to allocate surplus funds as of June 20th... June 30th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Second.
Marie. Comments, questions on this one? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We are on number nine, which is to transfer $272,299 from the general fund contingency account for the compensated absences as of June 30th, 2022.
Move approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 10, to transfer $600,000 from the general fund contingency account for commodities as of June 30th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have gas and oil prices gone up even higher? I don't think so. Anybody... All those in favor, excuse me?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And then 11, to approve carryovers of $600,000 from the fiscal year 2021-2022 to fiscal year 2022-2023 within the general fund.
Move approval.
I'm going to give Sebastian that one. We have a second. John?
Second.
Andrew got the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And then we are on number 12, which is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by Comptroller.
Good evening. So you approved a lot of money tonight, carryovers and reserves, so I'm just going to explain a little bit about where that all came from. That was all for June 30th, 2022. We're in the process of closing out our fiscal year end and working with the auditors. The first item, the $4,747,000 that was transferred, those were all surplus funds. If you remember during the year, we had a lot of surplus revenues. And what we typically do, as is a practice for the city, is we will reserve those funds and put them into different reserve funds, the equipment building sinking fund. We set up the mill rate stabilization reserve fund. As you see, we sent some aside for the commodities that we're setting aside for the current fiscal year. But just to give you some highlights of where those funds came from, you know, the building permit revenues, we did very well on that. So $750,000 came from there. Our conveyance taxes, $1.1 million. The motor vehicle sup, we had $734,000 that came from the supplemental. And then we also did receive additional pilot money. The state changed the pilot program to a different tiered program, so we actually did receive $458,000 in additional grant funds. So those were the larger amounts, but that basically what we do is we will take that. Our expenditures pretty much balanced out. We had a lot of compensated absences. As you know, we had a lot of retirements last year. So all of those surplus revenues were transferred to the equipment building sinking fund, the mill rate stabilization reserve fund, $600,000 for commodities. And then we also did set aside some additional funds to the economic development fund. All that being said, at the end of June 30th of 2022, and this is something that we do work on with the Board of Finance and the mayor, our fund balance unassigned at the end of June 30th right now, and again, this is unaudited, is at 14.2%. And we do have a policy with the Board of Finance to stay between 12% to 15% for unassigned. So we are within that range. Are there any questions on the year-end of June 30th? We are in the process of working with the auditors. The auditors have been here for the last two weeks. They will be here one more week, and we are doing everything in our power to make sure that we can try to get the report at least drafted by the middle of December and not have to file extensions like we did last year. The one other thing that I do want to just say, we do have that mill rate stabilization reserve fund that we've been setting aside, and I know it will definitely help in next year's budget. There is a balance that is available right now in that fund of about $3.2 million. So just wanted to share that news with everybody. With the current year, not too much to report. Everything is status quo, and really don't have too much to report there. On the state grant side, we did receive notice that we are... The state did have funds and did reinstate the municipal revenue sharing grant, and we did receive $1.2 million that was not anticipated last year. So that is surplus funds for the current year, and we... From everything I've been reading, I think we can anticipate that in the next year's budget as well. But we'll keep an eye on that. And that is the one, if you remember, we have to maintain the 2.5% spending cap. Every dollar we go over, we get penalized 50 cents. So again, another goal that we have to stay at, the 2.5% cap. We're watching our fuel accounts, and I think that's really all I have to report. If anybody has any other questions on what I've reported, or... I'll answer them.
Anybody in the room first? We'll start here. Questions for Diane? How about anybody on Zoom? Questions for Diane?
All good.
Just a comment.
Go ahead, John.
If you look at that report, they've been segregating legal fees, I think, now for about three or four years. There was a reason for that three or four years ago, but I don't know that there's a reason for it now when the comptroller's office has to go back and pull together every month what we expend. I would think it would be more meaningful for us if Diane and her staff can pull out some really integral issues, like fuel, for example, or capital projects, and report to us on them each month as opposed to what we spend on legal fees because I'm not sure that the legal fee issue is meaningful any longer to anybody, frankly.
I would agree with your comment that they're not useful for anybody at this point going forward. I just wanted to dig a little bit deeper. Do you want to have a special request of something different reported? Or do you just want to remove that for now? And we'll kind of ad hoc ask Diane as we go to monitor other things.
I would rather have Diane and her staff pull out something which they feel is more meaningful and we should know about as opposed to...
So at their discretion each month, yeah? Yeah, I like that idea.
I could surprise you every month with something different.
Sounds good. I don't know that we need a motion for that, anyway.
No.
But we'll go ahead and make that request, Diane. Appreciate it. Thanks, John. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business to come before the joint board? Or joint meeting, I should say. Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We're adjourned. Call the city council meeting on Wednesday, November 9th, 2022, to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, Mason? You start. Say it out loud.
I...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic's political stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. So let's start with introductions on my far right tonight because we have a new member with us today.
Jaclyn Olson, City Council, District 2.
Joanie Lucetani, City Council, District 1. Cheryl Tebow, City Council, District 3.
Macy Hopkins. I'm Little Miss Mom.
Thank you, Macy. Jeff Cagiano, Mayor.
Andrew Howe, Council, District 3.
Sebastian Pino, City Council, District 1.
Sue Tyler, City Council, District 2.
Thank you, everybody. Tonight, for our moment of reflection, I think it's quite obvious that as we're moving a month past the tragic events from October 12th, that we take a moment to remember both Lieutenant Damonte and Sergeant Hamsey, and all the other officers and first responders that were affected by that horrific tragedy. And we'll just take a moment of silence for them. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. We'll move on to number two, which is the approval of the minutes of the regular city council meeting of October 11th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any changes, amendments, corrections? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right. Number three, public participation. Did we have anybody? We don't have anybody for public participation. That's...
And Mayor, if you have no...
A little bit surprising.
If you have no one, I would like to say something.
Oh, that would be great. Go ahead, Therese.
This is my last meeting, as most of you know, and after 853 meetings, I would also like to tell you that for tonight, I've never had a change on any of the minutes in the 24 years I've been here. So today kept the record. Other than that, I want to thank all of the great customers that I've had in the Town Clerk's office that have had the honor to serve in this city. And I've really enjoyed working for the city of Bristol.
Thank you very much, Therese. And Therese, I didn't catch the number that you said of meetings because I had done this. You're stealing my announcement, but that's fine. So how many meetings was it? That's what I thought, so...
853.
For the record, so 24 years. Thank you for your service for 24 years. And if I'm not mistaken, over those 24 years, you missed one city council meeting, right? That was it? On vacation, which is amazing, by the way. I'm not saying that's a bad thing. That's crazy. That's very good. I just want to sincerely thank you for your efforts as well. You've been serving this community for 24 years. I don't know how many mayors that has been, but we really appreciate everything that you've done, Therese. So congratulations to you on your retirement. All righty. So we are on to announcements, so I'll start on my left this time and start with Susan Tyler.
Just a couple. As we enter into the cold weather months and in light of the increased number of unsheltered people and increased number of people experiencing food insecurities, I just want to highlight two fundraisers that are coming up pretty quickly here. So the Agape House, which is one of our homeless outreach centers, is having a Journey of Thanks fundraiser on Thursday, November 17th, at the Doubletree down on Century Drive. That fundraiser is from 5:30 to 9:00, and you can find more information. There's still time to get tickets. You can find more information online, on their website, or on Facebook. Also, St. Vincent de Paul, the city's only actual homeless shelter, is holding their fundraiser, Hope for the Homeless 4, and that will be on Thursday, December 1st. This year's event is going to be a comedy show, and we all need a few laughs. And it will be held at Mulligan's Restaurant in Terryville, just over the line. Doors open at 6:30, and the comedy show starts at 8:00. And again, for more information, you could go on to St. Vincent de Paul's Facebook page or their website.
Thank you, Cheryl. Sebastian?
Susan.
Oh, Sue. You know I do that automatically. I apologize. Both wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The 2022 St. Gregory Christmas Craft Fair will be held on November 26th and November 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the St. Gregory CCD Center. That's at 1043 Stafford Avenue. The fair will feature 46 crafters, a bake sale, the Christmas attic, and a basket raffle. The kitchen will serve breakfast and lunch both days. In addition, a raffle will be held, and winners will be drawn at the conclusion of the fair. So that's one event that's near dear to my heart. That's my church, and it's in District 1, so it's a good event to pick off the holiday season in a couple of weeks. And I echo the mayor's sentiments, Therese. Thank you. I know you helped me personally through a lot of my experiences through City Hall, so I want to thank you for your service as well.
Andrew?
Just a couple. Just a couple from Parks. The 25th Annual Turkey Shoot Event is being held on November 19th, again, at Chippens Hill Middle School, from 9:30 a.m. till 12:00. Busy couple of months for the Parks. With Christmas time approaching, the Parks Department has set up an application for families who are in need. They are asking that the applications come in by November 19th. So with everybody out there that's in need right now, we've had such a community outpouring. I think that if... To compensate, if we could donate at the Parks Department to compensate what they already have, would be great to show a whole nother amazing side of our town that we've seen over the last month. So if you know somebody that needs help or you have the opportunity to help, the application is right on the BristolRec.com page. And then with... They are now partnering through Christmas with the Bristol Police Department in the Stuff the Cruiser event. They're asking for unwrapped toys to fill into the cruiser on November 19th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Bristol Walmart. One more from Parks. They have set up a new portal for the transformation of the Parks Department and all our city parks. You can reach them at BristolRec.com, and there is a link in there. Not only can you see the information that's upcoming projects, but you still have the opportunity to show feedback on these park projects going on. So busy time for them. They also have the Santa's Village coming up, so we'll have more info on that soon.
Thank you, Andrew. My only reminder, and I'm going to do a quick announcement here, too, is the town is quite amazingly blue every night and early morning as you drive through. November 12th marks the one-month anniversary, so I did throw out a number a couple of weeks ago to try to get it to 70% or 80% of homes. We're probably getting close. It's still time that you can order blue lights over Amazon and get them for this Saturday. I will remind people, too, that on Veterans Day, there's always been this tradition to put a green light in your outdoor light, and that's certainly fine. That's why we're picking the 12th to go ahead and do blue lights. But the city looks very nice, so I want to thank everybody that's done that and hope that we can continue that. Thank you.
Next up, Macy.
Hi, I'm Little Miss Mom. I'm collecting bottles and cans for the 1st of December, and all that money is going to go for Toys for Tots, and I like to make kids happy.
Thank you, Macy.
Macy, how much have you raised already?
$167.
$167. And if people want to donate some bottles and cans, they can contact the mayor's page, either on Facebook or my council page or any council, and we'll get those addresses to Macy's mom so that we can keep getting some more cans and bottles for Toys for Tots. Macy, what's your favorite toy?
LOLs.
And what are LOLs for those of us who don't know?
They're little dolls that have little surprises in them.
Okay. Anything else you want to add? All right, well, thank you for coming to council tonight. Just wait here, we got a couple more announcements first, okay? And then you can go home and go to bed, right?
Do your homework first. No.
No homework first, none.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Yes. First of all, I'd like to thank Macy for coming out today, and I'm delighted she wanted to join us here at council, and I'm very proud of somebody who wants to do something to help other children. That's very sweet of you. And again, Therese, thank you. I've worked with you for so many years, not quite twenty-four, but if we added together, it could get close, but I wish you the best. I have a couple announcements, yes, and in light of having a crown at our table here, we did crown a new Miss Bristol, Lori Christie, and a new Miss Bristol Outstanding Teen, Emily Anastagio, on October twenty-ninth. So they will be working with the Miss Mom, Miss Bristol Organization to represent the city at events coming forward for the next year. The Main Street Foundation has a fundraiser that benefits the Men and Boys Fund. There's one more tonight and tomorrow night. You can have ten percent of your meal ticket, donate it to this fine organization if you go to Bell City Diner. Now, you do have to have a copy, a physical copy, of their ad. I do have it posted on my city council Facebook page. If you go there and print it, just bring that with you, and they'll donate ten percent to the Men and Boys Fund. And then lastly, the Little Leagues here in Bristol are having a fall cleanup to get the fields ready so that the winter, the debris can be removed and cleaned up before the winter months. So this Saturday, from eight to eleven, they'll be cleaning up the McCabe Fields. And next Saturday, the nineteenth, from eight to eleven AM, they'll be in Forestville. So if you have the time and the energy, please come out, help them clean up the fields. Many hands make the work go faster. Thank you.
Yes, I just have one. The Board of Education on November seventeenth will be hosting their second redistricting meeting at six-thirty at Bristol Central High School, so if parents are concerned, there's the time to learn more information and to get your questions answered. I would also like to recognize the Cub Scout PAC, four thirty-two, area of, area, arrow, sorry, of light from Ivy Drive School, if you guys can please stand. So this PAC has been working on learning how to build a better world. In doing so, they have learned the history of the American flag, rights and duties as a citizen, and what it means to be loyal to our country. They decided to come tonight and watch the elected officials in action and learn a little bit, so I wanted to thank you and congratulate you and keep up the good work, okay?
Thank you. And the mayor is going to ask for a mea culpa, so I know you guys earn and collect pins. I have all heart pins for all of you, but I think they're on my desk in the office, and I ran down to my car to get them. So this is good news. Four thirty-two is my PAC. I went to Ivy Drive School, so you're going to have to invite me to a PAC meeting, and I will bring pins for all of the PAC members, all right? Thank you. Thanks, Jolene.
I don't have any announcements, Mayor, but I would like to thank Therese for all her years of service.
Thank you. We'll let Macy get home and get her homework done. She looked at me like she had some. Did you finish it? No? All right. Thanks, Macy.
Thank you, Macy.
All right, so we will move on to agenda number five, and that's our consent calendar. It's items A through I, and I do believe we want to withdraw one of these, correct, Cheryl?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull item I, please.
I'll entertain a motion then to approve items A through H.
So moved.
Second.
Any other comments, questions on those? No? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Give us a motion to do I, and then we can talk about it.
Yes, I make a motion to bring item five, I, to the table.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, motion carries. Cheryl, I know you wanted to talk about this one. This is, yeah, something that we want to highlight a little bit.
Right. This item is to require every member of a city board or commission to annually acknowledge the city's conflict of interest policies by signing a conflict of interest acknowledgement. I think this is a great idea. I applaud Corp. Counsel for coming forward with this, because I think it just adds to more transparency. My questions were really more about how it will be implemented, and so if we could get a little bit of guidance, will this be up to the chair of each committee and so forth? And what will happen as new members are, take the oath, will they sign it at that point? So if you could go over the semantics and the responsibilities for the committees, that would be helpful.
Ed, you're going to talk about that? Thanks. Yeah, we did, thank you for the question. Ahead of time, we did talk about this, so.
So councilwoman, I don't think anybody has actually thought about the way in which it will be implemented. We did have a meeting with the mayor where we discussed it. I think probably the initial step will be going forward, that the officer of the town clerk, when people are obviously appointed, we should probably add to the packet when they're appointed, you know, this information. That probably would be a very good thing. I think in addition, we're going to ask the mayor's office to notify all of the chairman of the various boards and commissions that the policy has been adopted, and that we would like them to, you know, pass it on to the members of each of their respective committees. I think one of the questions I had heard through the grapevine that you had was, well, how is this enforced? Unfortunately, there is no mechanism to make sure that everybody's doing these things. I think people will find out the hard way, however, if they are violating it, because someone will file a complaint, and then the procedures that are found in the charter and our ordinances would come into play. I think it's a good policy. It actually originated with a request from our comptroller, dealing with the Board of Finance and some of the activities there. We've had this conversation with the retirement board, and we just thought that it made, you know, good sense to expand it to all of our boards and commissions. Hopefully, that's.
Thank you. I agree, it is a good, it is a good policy.
Yep, and the other thing to point out here as well is, not only is the conflict of interest statement filled out, but then there is a disclosure document that would be filled out. That is something that is also has to be ongoing, and, yep, you're going to get up. As people disclose that they have conflicts of interest, they will need to fill out this form. This is something, I think, if I'm correct, Ted, has been on the books and probably has not been followed through with all that much.
That's what I was going to highlight, Mr. Mayor. This has been in place since we adopted the ethics portions of our charter and ordinances. When people indicate that they have a conflict of interest and they are not going to participate in a debate, quite literally, they are to announce that they have a conflict prior to any discussion of that matter. They are to remove themselves from the room that the meeting or the discussion is occurring, and then within seven days, they are supposed to be filing forms with the officer of the town clerk that they had this conflict, and here's what it has to do with. The form is in your package, so you can see what it is. That form hasn't changed. We just are using the exact same form with this new policy.
Great. And so this adds further clarification to when people have to abstain because of a conflict, this is the form they'll fill out after. And thank you for reviewing kind of the nuts and bolts of what happens when you do have a conflict. Cheryl, all your questions answered to this point?
Absolutely.
Very good. Any other comments or questions? Sue?
So through the chair, is this the same form? Like, I filled out a conflict of interest form. Therese handed these out when we first got into office, and I filled one out, because I'm on the Board of Directors for St. Vincent de Paul. Is it the same form?
That's, that's the fourth page of this, so that would be that form, I believe.
Well, we've never had, my office has never had a form, but yes, you, you know, people have been able to file in their own writing, you know, send a letter to my office saying there's a conflict of interest, you know, for whatever reason.
Yep, and that's kept at the town clerk's office on file, so we can continue that process moving forward if we have those.
Okay.
Anything else? All right, I think we need to actually technically have a motion to approve this then, right?
Yes, I make a motion to approve item five, I.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, number six, reports and committee reports. Therese or Marina, I don't know if one of you want to start reading for me. I know I've been kind of taken over.
Well, just the real estate committee?
Yep.
So it would be Susan, and it's the acceptance of the Pam Odell offer.
And as of this time, we are going to withdraw this. We don't have anything to make a motion on at, tonight.
Okay, so they're not ready for this yet?
Nope.
Will we need a motion to table then, or procedurally? Ted, or one of the lawyers? No? You can just, okay, good. We'll go to B.
Salary Committee?
Yep.
And it's to approve the tuition reimbursement.
Yes, thank you. The Salary Committee worked with our HR Director, Mark Penny, and we took a look at the city's tuition reimbursement program. There were several reasons for doing this, is, one, we wanted to make sure there was fairness and equity, that all city employees had an opportunity to partake in the program. We also looked at what several other cities and towns in the state of Connecticut are doing, and tried to find out the best fit. In the past, the Board of Finance has approved a set dollar amount to be used for tuition reimbursement. We're not going to change that. We're going to allow the Board of Finance to make a recommendation for the budget. It's ever, however, how the dollars are allocated. And by doing this, we set some groundwork, that an employee may be reimbursed up to two thousand dollars per fiscal year, with a lifetime cap of eight thousand dollars. Now, it doesn't mean they're going to get the full two thousand in a year. If there's ten thousand dollars approved by the Board of Finance, and thirty people apply for tuition reimbursement, that set amount will be divided amongst all the employees that apply. The program still, the classwork still has to be approved by the department head to make sure that it complies with their current job requirements, and it does apply if they're going to get an AS, a BS, or a master's. So we felt it provided a little bit more fairness and equity, so that all employees can participate, and not just the first in, as in the past, taking advantage of all the funds. So the committee, you know, unanimously approved this, and so I do have a motion I'd like to read, and then we can have questions. So I make a motion to approve the tuition reimbursement policy for general city employees as amended.
Second.
Any other comments or questions on this? I know that I will just speak that the program has been widely used, but was kind of more focused on certain individuals, and so we, we're going over budget pretty consistently without any really clear guidelines, and so I think the guidelines you put together make, you know, good sense, and we certainly want to help people with education, but we also wanted to make sure that we weren't taking taxpayer dollars. It's a little different than the private sector to go ahead and give people degrees through, you know, the private sector, and I think these make a lot of sense. But does anybody have any questions? No? All right, I think we're ready to vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, so those are all the actual agenda items, but I will start on my right to see if there's any committee reports with Jackie.
I do.
Okay, Jolene?
No, not tonight.
Yes, I want to make one update. The Board of Public Works, when we met, we had, again, looked at the recommendations presented to us by the engineers in regards to the dog pound, the city dog pound, and there were three options laid out, to refurbish the existing, to build as new, or to build a completely new dog pound. The Public Works Board opted for options B and C to present to the Police Commission, because it is a partnership, the police, animal control officers, and it's important that there's the Police Commission and the Police Department have say in this, even though the building will be built and maintained by Public Works, it's, they cross lines. And the Police Commission also recommended a new facility, so we will be pursuing that in the upcoming budget, and talking with economic development, maybe about applying for a SIF grant, and start to look at how we could fund this and how this would come about. So it's great news for those friends of the city dog pound, that we're on a step to having a much better facility for both the two-legged occupants and the four-legged occupants.
Great, thank you. I don't have any. Andrew?
Just a quick one. The QR codes on the Boulevard monuments are just about done. Sarah Larson and Dave Corello from the Veterans Council are finishing putting a little pizzazz on it, and it will be up and running, I would say, within the month. So that'll be interesting to see, so it's accessible, it's being read by veterans within the city when you scan the code per, each war has a different veteran reading the story of the war. So that should be really interesting for a, bit of history for the kids as they walk the Boulevard. Just want to quickly, I forgot, that Veterans Day is Friday, and both Forestville and Bristol will be having ceremonies. It's, Forestville's is going to be in Quinlan Park, Bristol's on Post Two on Hooker Court here in Bristol. The Veterans Day is always set and recognized on the eleventh day of the eleventh month of the eleventh hour, eleven minutes on the hour. So there'll be, some of us will be in Forestville, some of us will be in Bristol, so if you can join, by all means, we'd love to have you there. Oh, and a quick other note, I sat with Josh Maderos today at Page Park about bringing back the carolsing and the Christmas tree lighting. Everything should run smoothly, but if anybody knows Christmas trees, that's what we're looking at right now. If anybody knows where, they will let us cut one down if they have a property, or we're looking, so you can reach out to me or the mayor, and we'll get put in touch with Josh. So, that's it.
Thanks, Andrew. Sebastian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple notes on some events that we've had the last couple of weeks. The Diversity Council held the first of what we hope to be many panel discussions, featuring voices around the community, and the first installment featured autism advocates and staff from the Focus Center for Autism, which is in Canton. So we heard from some residents and some students at the school, which you don't really get insight into every day, and they shared their stories with us. The crowd really got a different perspective that, like I said, you don't really, you get every day, and they did a great job. We'd like to schedule more of these. I think sometimes we, I think in this instance, we schedule a little too tight, so we'd kind of like to look for some more room with scheduling and for promotion in the future. But a great experience, the audience got a lot out of it, so we're hoping to do more of those in the future with the Diversity Council. And also the library, with the Friends of the, the Friends of the Library held the Author Luncheon, which was a huge success with two-time Pulitzer winner Colson Whitehead. A large crowd at the Doubletree there, which is a great venue for that. There was a two-year hiatus, so lots of people looking to get back together and go to events like, like what we had. Thank you, Mayor, for coming and saying a few words also. So we're looking forward to next year's Author Luncheon, and hopefully we can top what we had this year.
That's a great program. Thanks. Susan?
I really don't have too many updates on any of the committees. This has been a little bit of an off month. If I may, though, through, through the Police Commission, I just really wanted to extend publicly a huge shout-out to Lindsay Rivers and all of the employees over at Public Works, and everyone working with them, because the memorial in front of the Police Department has been kept in tip-top shape, and it is, there is not a time that I drive by that I don't see members of our community, or from people who have come from outside of our community, visiting what is right now our memorial. And Lindsay and her crew have worked tirelessly and worked on every single one of their lunch breaks to keep this looking respectful and the way that it should. And on top of that, I know Public Works is also taking the flowers that aren't fit to keep on the cruiser, and they're composting them, and they're going to be using the compost for a future planting. They're also taking the, the plastic that comes on the flowers, and they're recycling that, and they're going to be making it into like a Trex bench. So I just want to give a shout-out, because that just really kind of fixes a broken heart just a little tiny bit, to see it being kept in the condition that it's being kept in. So I just wanted to say thank you to Lindsay and to everyone else.
Yep, and if you don't mind, I want to add the names. So it's Lisa, Gillian, and Jaclyn as well, from Police Administration, that have been working directly with Lindsay. So we have recognized all of them as Employees of the Month for the work that they did, so thank you, Susan. That's a great call-up.
May I ask Chief Gold to?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, and just want to echo and, you know, appreciate the support that we've been getting from the community, and quite frankly, we have people coming from all over the place. I have been asked through emails and phone calls and such, not to take down the memorial, and I just want to let everybody know that there are no plans to remove that. It is a place for people to go to remember our greatest, and we're going to continue that. So I just want to let everybody know that there is no plan at this point to remove that. So thank you very much, and we will, we will continue with everything we're doing. Appreciate the support. Thank you.
Great. I guess this would be a good time, too, to add that we have put together a Police Memorial Subcommittee of the Police Commission. We will announce those meetings probably starting in the next week or two, and this will be a long process to decide what's the best way to honor our fallen heroes. But the ideas can keep coming in, and we're collecting them through the mayor's office or Police Administration, if you have ideas, or city council people. So as ideas come in, please email them along, and we're, we're creating a spreadsheet of all these great ideas. Thanks, Sue. Anything else?
That's all for this month.
That's it. Any that we forgot, I think you had one you wanted to do?
I see Donna over there, and I don't want to get yelled at for it. The Readiness Council has opportunities for children and adults right now. Parents are looking for high-quality preschool experience for their child. Feel free to reach out to the School Readiness Funded sites. There's full-day spots available at Bristol Childhood Development Center, the Imagination, a Museum of Early Learning, and a part-day school year slots are available at the Bristol Public Schools, contacted the Early Childhood Center, and then the programs that are looking for caring people interested in working in the field of early childhood. There are opportunities for educational growth and advancement. Again, please reach out to our School Readiness Community sites, and Bristol Childhood Development Center, and Imagination, and a Museum of Early Learning Center. Sorry, Donna.
I think we're good. So we'll move to item number seven, which is unfinished business. I'm not aware of any unfinished business. Do we have any unfinished business? No? We're going to go to new business. A little curveball here, Tom. I was just. I was just going to try to get your attention, but Cheryl's got a good idea here.
Through the chair. You know, many of us have received calls or questions from constituents on the revaluation. And I know the mayor had asked our tax assessor to come in, so we thought we'd have some people in public participation. So I apologize to put you on the spot, but I thought it would be good to bring you up to just talk about a little bit because you'll reach an audience that is not on Facebook who watch the meetings. So if you don't mind talking about it a little bit, please.
It's an easy thing to do. It's what we're doing all day since last Friday. Basically, we all know that mortgage interest rates have been at the lowest level in history throughout the majority of 2022, in the 3%, 2.5%, 3% range. It wasn't until recently, within like the last couple of weeks, with the federal funds rate being increased, that we've seen spikes in those interest rates. Well, the low interest rates essentially fueled our real estate market, and it created such a shortage in supply that we had, in many cases, some bidding wars going on with properties around the city. So ultimately, revaluations every five years take into consideration your most recent market activity. And that most recent market activity is reflected in what we call qualified sales. So the short of it is that we hired a consultant. I reviewed a lot of the consultant's information. All of those hearing notices are a notice to be able to show you what's actually transpired over the last five years. What was your assessment in 2017, and what is the current projected assessment for 2022? We're evaluating the neighborhoods as we get requests for hearings, and we are looking at values on a case-by-case basis. One of the things that we've seen in a lot of the real estate market is the fact that when a house did sell, in many cases, it was really refreshed. You know, a lot of the surfaces were painted, kitchens had modest updates to them, bathrooms had modest updates. So staff have been going out in these hearings and re-inspecting property to make sure that the condition ratings are reflected correct on the property record card. We're also asking the community to go out to the assessor website. There's an icon out there for Vision Appraisal to log into the database, look up your record, and make sure the information on your property record card is also correct. We've had a couple of nuances where some people have been listed as having a four-bedroom house, and they have a three-bedroom house or something of that nature. So the integrity of the information in the database has been really good as well. Now, we're also taking a look at the grand list as a whole, and I think one of the key elements to consider is that we're looking at about roughly $800 million in net grand list growth. It's touched just about all property classes. The property classes that haven't fared out as well are brick-and-mortar, retail, and office space. They haven't seen nearly the increases while everything has technically gone up. They haven't gone up to the proportion of all of our housing stock. Apartments, industrial warehouse, properties like that, across the board, they've seen some type of an increase in this revaluation. So Diane Wildron and I are very careful to take a look at some of these projected statistics. We haven't fully developed the personal property component of the grand list, nor have we received what the motor vehicle grand list is going to look like for active registrations. But we can sort of project forward on that. Diane and I talked a couple of days ago about what a projected budget could look like. Of course, that all has to be vetted out, and that takes a long period of time as well. But ultimately, as you look at these projections, you get a sense that with that much growth in the net grand list, and the city has always been very conservative with its spending, that's why our effective tax rate is so competitive, that if you look on margin, that mill rate has to come down. And that component of the conversation, you can't just take the new mill rate and multiply it times the existing mill rate. If you do that, you're going to come up with an astronomical figure that is going to give you sticker shack. Now, are taxes going up potentially? Yes, in many cases, they are potentially going up. The only way that they would go down is if the grand levy actually went down proportionately, and that's the amount of money that you need from the taxpayer base. All in all, we have had some upset, you know, upset people contact us, but in the end, my staff has been phenomenal. The phone is ringing off the hook, but they're doing their absolute best to make sure they schedule an appointment for everybody that wants one, anybody that wants one. And we'll keep doing the work for the public that we're here to do and make sure that it's fair. That's ultimately our mission, that we get the value right and that we can also defend the value. If you've recently purchased your house or you recently refinanced your house, you're going to have an appraisal. So it's simply taking that assessed value and dividing it by .7 to get to full market value, that you'll be able to come into the value that you either recently purchased at or you had a refinance appraisal at. So there is a double-checking that you could do in the background as well.
Great. Thanks. One quick comment here. Great overview, lots of information there, but I think a key point for people to hear is that reval happens every five years. We happen to hit probably a high point, and it does not affect your current tax rate. This goes into effect. We do it in the rears. We won't have a new tax rate for anybody until July of 2023, and there's two other components to this that are very important. We need to come up with our budget, which we will do in the May timeframe, and then we come back and we calculate off the grand list what the new mill rate will be. As you said, it's likely, very likely, that it's going to be lower, and so, you know, people at this point need to really just focus in on what the assessment is individually, and if there's a contention that they have, they should bring that forward. So I really appreciate that.
Fantastic point. The value has to be the correct value first.
Yep. We're working on that. Cheryl?
Through the chair. I know in the letter, it said that if you had questions, you could do reasonable comps for those. Could you explain for people listening what that would entail? And secondly, is there a deadline? What's the drop dead date that they need to take action with your office before they're locked in?
So the letter says November 7th to December 29th. We'd like to have the grand list finalized and put together by the end of January. We're going to ultimately try to send out assessment notices, final assessment notices by the end of December. That'll also show you exemption information if you qualified for an exemption on your property. So it'll give you the full net effect of the revaluation at a net basis of assessment to keep everything on track, because the last thing that we want to do is keep on pushing out, you know, all of this information and saying that we'll keep reviewing property values, you know, out past a certain period of time, getting a grand list extension, things of that nature. That just creates more problems than it creates solutions, in my opinion. But ultimately, there is a Board of Assessment Appeals. You can bypass the assessor's staff, and the Board of Assessment Appeals application, which is available online at the city assessor website, can be filled out, and it has to be brought to the assessor's office or mailed in on or before February 20th of 2023 to reserve your appointment. And that's also another way that you can challenge your assessment. But the comparables that you're talking about, you know, I looked at, we have over 600 qualified residential sales that are the gamma: bungalow, Cape, Colonial, Contemporary, the whole gamma of properties, you know, multifamily housing stock. So it isn't as though there's a shortage of sales to look at, and we can certainly provide some comparable analysis for people that would like to test the value and see what it is that we're actually talking about. A mass appraisal system, though, is a global assessment process, and it can be compared to a refinance appraisal, but it's a little bit different to a certain degree.
One last question. I did have two multifamily owners come out, and they, one said, do you take into consideration if it's owner-occupied and they're not leasing, because I know one of the assessments is, you know, income-based? And so what do you do with multifamilies?
Multifamilies, you know, two, three, and four families, even five families, we do analyze rents in the background. It isn't, though, that you can capitalize that rent like you would on a six-family and above, which is more of an investment-grade property. So we're primarily looking at sales of those types of properties. And yes, excuse me, it is an annuity-based property to a degree. Even though you're an owner-occupant, I do have a couple people that have already approached me, and they're like, this is our house. We live here. Family lives here. We don't receive rental income. But it's one of the hottest components that was in that market earlier this year, and we had very low supply of multifamilies on the market.
Thank you.
Great. Great overview. Appreciate that very much. Any other comments or questions from the council? Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out tonight. I hope you're not too busy over the next couple of weeks. All righty. I think we're good on new business, then? Any other new business? Number nine, resignations?
There are no resignations, Mayor.
I like that. And number 10 is appointments for November. So let me get my list. We are one year to the date of when we started this journey, and my first goal here is to reappoint Cheryl Tebow as a six-month term to 6/13/2022 as acting mayor. So we don't need a vote on that one, right? Therese, or do we?
It's a mayor's appointment.
Mayor's appointment, that's what I thought, so we're good. Mayor's Task Force on AIDS. I'm going to need a motion for this one to replace Christina Cipriani, resigned of 7/29/22, and there's no term. And then also to replace Janelle Howard. Actually, we can't do that one yet because we haven't hired that person, so just that one. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries, or can we? I had another one listed there, but we don't... That position, Janelle Howard, I believe, was Parks Recreation Youth Services Coordinator.
She was.
But we don't have the new hire there yet.
And the same thing with Christine Cipriani. Who was replacing her?
Oh, we didn't name anybody, so those are both going to be on hold then, so we'll withdraw that. I apologize. On our list to be done in December. Good catch, Therese. Thank you. American Rescue Plan Task Force, we're going to replace Ann Munger Crystal with John Leoni, and there is no term to the American Rescue Plan Task Force either. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Cheryl, I think I... I don't know. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. City Arts and Culture Commission, we're going to replace Kim Valante with Nigel Winter, unexpired term to 4/25.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. City historian to replace Robert Montgomery with Tom Dicko. This is a two-year term that will expire in 11/24.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. This is my fault. This was actually supposed to be, I think, at our September meeting, and I thought it got done at a special meeting, but I don't think we appointed a Firehouse Building Committee. And so I'll read all of them, and then we'll do a motion to appoint Richard Hart, who is the fire chief, no term on this one, to appoint Craig Henderson, who's Engine Three Captain, no term, to appoint Sean Moore, who is a fire commissioner, there's no term, to appoint Raymond Rogazinski, Department of Public Works Director, no term, to appoint Sebastian Panietto, who is District One Council member that serves in that area, and then to appoint John Ladavico, Citizen at Large, no term. Can I have a motion to approve the Firehouse Building Committee?
Motion to approve.
Jackie, I'm giving you the second. You were close. So Andrew did that, and Jackie's the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. School readiness, to replace Tatiana Garcia with Jennifer Bilbra as the small business owner, and then to appoint Tatiana Garcia as a parent member at large.
Move approval. Go ahead.
That's Sebastian moved it.
I'll second.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And finally, the Western Connecticut Convention and Visitors Bureau to reappoint Dawn Nielsen to a three-year term that expires on 11/26.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. I think we got all of them. Did I miss any, Marina? I don't think so. Okay. Very good. We'll move on to 11. Can I have you read that one for me, Therese?
Donation of $1,500 from Clinton S. Roberts Foundation Incorporated to the Mayor's Task Force on HIV/AIDS. And, Your Honor, you'll probably want to make a referral on this to the Board of Finance for an appropriation and also to accept it if you choose to do so.
Good. So can we make a motion to also refer it to the Board of Finance as well and accept it?
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Number 12.
Approval of change orders for Damato Downs, a joint venture for the Memorial Boulevard Intra-District Arts Magnet School totaling $69,606.70.
Move approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And number 13.
Approval to submit application up to $250,000 for DEEP Climate Resilience Fund Planning Phase One Grant for flood mitigation in the Pecquabic River Coppermine Brook watershed area, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents and refer to the Board of Finance.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And number 14 is a resolution.
And it's a resolution regarding approval to submit EMPG grant application to support the city's emergency management, planning, and response functions on an annual basis, and there is a resolution to read.
Go ahead. Who wants to read the resolution for me? Is it open here? Somebody have it? Cheryl, I see it open.
Okay. Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of a grant application for $29,973.50 to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security for the federal fiscal year 2022 Emergency Management Performance Grant, funding is hereby approved and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to enter into, deliver, and execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents, and to do and perform all acts and things which he deems necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of this application grant. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Great. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any other comments or questions on this? We'll do a roll call vote. I'll turn that to you, Therese, to call the roll.
Aye.
Lucitani?
Aye.
Tebow?
Aye.
Howe?
Aye.
Panietto?
Aye.
Tyler?
Aye.
And Mayor?
Aye. Motion carries. All righty. Last track here, sorry. Let me do it. 15?
15?
Yep, 15. Go ahead, Therese.
Approval of Amendment Contract 2P2131B with Damato Downs, a joint venture for $162,030.11, and to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
Move approval.
Second.
Any comments, questions on this one? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. And number 16 is another resolution.
Regarding Approval of Education Specifications.
Hang on one second.
No.
Oh, you had that, Jolene?
Do you want me to read the motion?
Let Therese read it first. Uh, let, let Therese read it first. Sorry, go ahead.
Resolution regarding approval of education specifications, acceptance or rejection of a grant, and preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for Southside School HVAC replacement project at 21 Tuttle Road. And there are three portions of a resolution. You can read it as one.
Okay.
Resolve, this Bristol City Council approves education specifications for the Southside School HVAC replacement project located on 21 Tuttle Road. Resolve, the Bristol City Council authorizes the Bristol Board of Education Superintendent to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the Southside School HVAC replacement project located on 21 Tuttle Road. Resolve, this Bristol City Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the Southside School HVAC replacement project located at 21 Tuttle Road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Great, and we'll do a roll call vote for this one as well.
Tyler?
Yes.
Keeping you awake. Panietto?
Yes.
How?
Yes.
Tebow?
Yes.
Lucy Tani?
Yes.
Olson?
Yes.
And Mayor?
Yes. Motion carries. Very good. We are on to number 17, which is executive session to review the labor agreement between the City of Bristol and Bristol BPSA, effective July 1st through June 30th, 2025. I'll need a motion to go on executive session, and Ted, who are we bringing in with us?
Personnel director and myself.
Okay.
Motion to go into executive session.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are in executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to take us out of executive session.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. No votes were taken in executive session. I think we have a motion.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a motion to approve a three-year labor agreement between the City of Bristol and the Bristol Professionals and Supervisors Association, effective July